Good evening, it's seven o'clock. Planning Commission. Planning Commission calling the East Line Planning Commission to order at seven o'clock. Time for roll call. Right to left.
Cindy Collins.
Kirk Scott.
Rich Gordon.
Brian Baumbeck.
Nick Menapease.
Thank you, we have one position vacant, but we don't have any alternates here, so we have enough people for a quorum, so we're good. Now time for the pledge allegiance. Call for any additions to the agenda? Anybody else? Thank you. Now's the time for public delegations. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters. Issues or concerns related to approved subdivisions, in-house proposals, or general topics of discussion are open to comment. Agenda items, referrals, applications subject to a decision by the commission, a public hearing, or litigation may not be discussed. The members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comments during delegations. Anything out there? Anybody out there? Wants to speak? Okay. Next section are the reports. Communications. Not aware of any. Zoning representative, did anybody here attend a zoning meeting since the last meeting?
I think that was Sam.
Okay. Next, ex officio Don McKenzie from the Board of Slemmen, do you have anything to update?
No sir.
Nothing to update?
Most of them's an executive session, so.
Okay.
I'll just leave that, thank you.
Thank you. Planning Director Gary Gashill, any updates?
I just update, I went Thursday and Friday of last week to the Southern England APA Conferences Springfield. We wanted a discussion focused around affordable housing. A lot of new legislation has come down as far as reporting requirements are concerned, making sure we get the report that our regulations are in compliance with OPM, so there's a couple nuances like that. Not a whole lot of things in the world of subdivisions, VOCs.
Thank you. Subcommittee's, okay, we don't have any updates? I don't have any updates, this is chairperson. Next up is the approval of the minutes. We approve minutes for October 8th. We had a meeting. I just need a motion to approve, approve or deny the minutes. Were there any comments on the minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 8th.
Any further discussion? Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in support of approving the minutes for last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All wish to deny? Any extensions?
Aye.
One extension, so okay. So it's four, zero, one. Approve the minutes in the next meeting. Next up, we have a public hearing. We have an application, Dynamic Management LLC for Joe Ren, P agent, for a one-lot re-subdivision of approximately 7.08 acres of landzone CA. Commercial waiver request from section 423 of the East Line subdivision regulations on property located at 269 Flanders Road, Niantic, Connecticut. Mr. Ren, did you want to speak?
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Joe Ren, professional engineer of Middigo in Old Sarer. With me also Derek Parker. Eric is the counsel for the, for the application as well. Here's going to bring up the plan on there, it's a little bit easier for all of us to see from every angle. So you're all familiar with this property, the intersection of 161 and King Arthur Drive. The building with the parking lot on top of the plan there, that's the existing Motel Six. They currently own approximately seven, 7.1 acres, that whole property. What this entails is, here if you could scroll up a little bit. So down in the lower right corner, which would be the southwest corner of the property. I could revert to this one here. Okay, so southwest corner of the property, you can see where that pink stripe goes through. I'll explain that momentarily. There are, there's proposed property line there to buy that parcel off. The parcel to be subdivided is 1.66 acres, leaving approximately 5.41 acres remaining with the hotel and parking lot. The pink stripe going through, that's the existing driveway, if you're all familiar. That driveway kind of comes right across, almost directly from the driveway of Starbucks in that area. So the plan with this, once that piece transferred, this is approved and that piece is transferred, that driveway would be removed, prep for new development. And then a new driveway up in the upper right corner of the plan there would be, would connect to the hotel, or connect the hotel to King Arthur Drive. That's in this location here. So, once that property is transferred, that existing driveway was gone, the new driveway would connect directly, less, less length, less elevation change, be a nice direct connection with the King Arthur right there. There is an existing drainage system within that existing driveway. In a meeting and talking to other works and the town engineer, they would like that stormwater system to remain on that parcel, so there would have to be an easement for that drainage to remain there. It can either remain in its current location, or it could be relocated in any way. The reason why they prefer that is there are two drainage systems in King Arthur. And our original plan, we wanted to just connect that drainage out by the new driveway, the new proposed driveway here, just directly connected to King Arthur. But that would connect into the other drainage system that's in King Arthur, one of two. They didn't want to mix the flows, we would have to look into enlarging the pipes in King Arthur. So he recommended that we just keep the drainage as it is through that property and connect to the same point down at the intersection of the driveway in King Arthur Drive. So that's what shows in this plan. Attorney Parker did put together a draft easement that was submitted to the record, which you all should have a copy of, showing that would stay on that property in that location. The proposed lot meets all the, in the lower left-hand corner here, we have the zoning people, and it meets a fully conforming lot, of course. We do show the rectangle that meets all of the requirements for the lot rectangle, and it is much larger than the 7,500 square foot minimum for a lot area in the CA zone. So it meets all that requirement, has plenty of frontage, it's a viable lot. We did have, oh by the way, there's all the water and sewer here too, so there's no septic system. There's no septic system needed for the front lot, the new lot, or the hotel, it's all technically public water and sewer. As part of the application, there were several waivers, and most of these waivers are, because this is not a urgent piece of forest land where we're going to create a large neighborhood or very large development, so a lot of the requests are from portions of the regulations, the requirements from several different regulations pertain to larger residential subdivisions or larger developments. So I could either go through those quick if you'd like, or if you have any questions on anything in specific, I could start a hand through those, or I could go through each one, one by one. Any questions?
I think we should discuss it. I think we should discuss it. Okay.
So number one, natural and cultural resources map. Based on USDA soil types for the entire lot, it's all eudorphins and broken soil, which means that it's disturbed, changed since its original condition. So that takes away from any of the original or historical condition of the property. Previous site activity, we have underground utilities, we have the driveway, it's been cleared, trees have been planted and so forth. And due to all of that, the site has no significant natural, cultural resources. Also, the site is between major roads and the existing Motel Six, and it is not within a DEP Natural Diversity Database area. We included that as part of the application as well, that map. Number two is archaeological survey, similar to what we had already mentioned. Number one, the site has no, very, very limited potential for supporting any significant archaeological resources. Again, based on soil types, based on previous activity and its location. Three, soil sciences report. Again, based on the USDA soil type, site observations, topography, and a review of the town GIS mapping, there are no wetland soils on site, and any wetland application is not required for this project. Number four, pesticide report. The future use and zone classification of property is commercial, not residential. Also, there is no known history of pesticide application on the property. Additionally, the entire lot is disturbed land based on the USDA soil types. Five, yield and cluster conservation plan and choice of design option report. Again, this mostly pertains to a residential subdivision, and this is not applicable to this commercial re-subdivision project, and only one additional lot is proposed. Traffic report. The proposed re-subdivision results in only one new lot. No actual construction is proposed at this time, and the proposed specific commercial use has not yet been determined. The DOT is currently reconstructing the intersection and signalization of King Arthur Drive and 161 to approve that. But again, as part of this plan, we're just proposing those two property lines to divide this 1.6 acres off of seven total. That's the only purpose of this re-subdivision application. Number seven, stormwater management plan. There's no proposed construction or any increase in impervious area as part of the project, so the stormwater will not change as a result of the proposed re-subdivision. And I already spoke to what the town engineer's preference was of keeping that stormwater system on that lot via an easement to connect into the same stormwater system as it is. Those are the waiver requests. And then right at the bottom of that same sheet, we have the sanitation and water supply reports in the old site. As I already mentioned, the site is served by public water and sewers, and there's no septic system or anything required as part of this. So that's everything in a nutshell, I tried to keep it brief. If you have any questions, I could answer them. Eric is here if there are any questions regarding any legal aspect of the subdivision or the draft easement. That's part of your package.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, is there a formal description of what the easement, somewhere that we can look at?
There's not, only because we don't know, if you look at that, I left the legal description to be added. We're committed to keeping it on the parcel, but depending on the activity on the parcel, it would obviously potentially shift one direction or the other. So the legal description would be meets and bounds of where it would stay. We might, for our construction activity, depending on what's proposed at some point in the future, we may shift it east or west, but keeping the same thing so we get to that same connection point down. So the ask was that we don't bang the hard turn and go out to the other pipe. We anticipate leaving it where it is, but it's premature to give you meets and bounds simply because we don't know what the next step will be for that parcel. So I just left this to be added. It'll be something that once we have, you know, say, plan approval someday down in the future, Joe will give me a legal description of that area so that we can put meets and bounds in there as a schedule.
We know we have to connect, say, in point eight. The system starts up here at the top of the driveway, and we know that we have to connect back into the system, that particular system in King Arthur. So whether we came this way, or whether we followed that roadside, that's to be determined based on whoever purchases this lot, or leases the lot and develops the lot, and how much of it they need, and if the storm system could stay, or would be under a building, for example, then we would push it off.
Access things like that.
And then at that time, the meets and bounds would be created in the D and E.
Just a question on that. In terms of filing the law, D and E's, they all have, so we have to have meets and bounds Rely on those, file.
How long after the subdivision approval, does the model have to be filed?
Ninety days, and you can trust up to two extensions.
Ninety days, so could have almost nine months.
Ninety, ninety, ninety.
So almost nine months.
Because of condition of approval, we're likely.
Yeah.
So that would sign right. We sort of view this as a step one, and we'll need that step two before we can wrap our head around that, but your points will take, and we can certainly make sure we get the.
Worst-case scenario, I understand, Gary's to this worst-case scenario, that we can assume that it's going down this property line and connecting in, and then if it needs to change.
I think my question is, attorney, is, can you write in there that it gives us meets and bounds for what's existing, and that it can be, object, in the future, it can be relocated, grant or in grant, he can say absolutely.
Or can you keep it general, that just the stormwater just has to stay on the lot? Give it kind of like a blankie.
Well, Joe lawyers hate blankies.
Yeah.
So.
I was trying to make it easy.
Ask counsel for their opinion as to, unless they perceive that.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like legally, it's not the best thing to do with blankies.
So just if they ever add financing or something like that in the future, I mean, like, not like that. So we would probably take to this, take that suggestion.
Does anybody else have any further comments or questions?
I might. I guess because there's no proposed construction on here. I'm just wondering if we've considered the traffic flow down at the base of King Arthur Drive now. We're introducing more traffic coming into this, you know, section where those two roads join. But I guess that's moot now because we don't have anything planned there.
So remember, that's just the existing drive, so the, the pink, that area highlighted in the pink will most likely be removed by the future.
Oh, well, okay.
We had done some conceptual plans, and it's best, because it, the slope's way uphill, it's best if they come in further away from the intersection so that they don't have such a steep driveway.
Yeah.
So if they come in here, they're level to where the building was.
That's what, that's what I was, well, I was thinking it'd be best to put a future drive, like you've coming out of the motel there, vice, you know, retaining that road up.
There would probably, you know, any developer of this property probably would want their own first cut.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, a couple hundred feet away from the existing one, and coming level into the property, so that would be the ideal way. When we, when we do land a developer, a buyer of the site, and they, we go to develop, we're coming with a site plan, you know, that's something that zoning would want to see too. No one would really want this intersection as it is.
Right, right.
That you're having traffic.
Right.
DOT's intersection will definitely help that intersection for sure.
Yeah.
The wider road and so forth, but it only makes perfect sense to come in up higher up on the road.
Yeah, just going to bring up the zoning issue with the driveway. So they're going to need, looks like you're going to need a permit from the engineering department, town engineering department, too?
You'll need a zoning site plan approval, and a public works approval as well, for the stormwater system, and he has the codes on all the one I hear.
Right.
Traffic report, if you weren't given up.
Okay.
It'll be contingent on what the proposal is, what we require for that.
I did have one additional one on that, if that's all right, Richard. So I guess I was a little unclear on this one, and forgive me if you did explain it, all right? But with this new lot, so the proposed lot, we have, is that one still going to be accessible from the Motel Six lot, or is it going to have a completely separate entry and exit?
Completely separate entry.
Okay.
So it's all the existing driveway in the paint would essentially be removed? The new connection to King Arthur, to Motel Six, would be this short driveway here?
Yeah.
And then the new development, approximately where this square is, is the best available area, the new driveway would probably come right directly into that.
Okay.
So all the paint would, no long, paint no long.
Yeah, well, I understand that part, I guess I'm more of, thinking it's a relatively, like, small area, does it, and is this plan to keep commercial, correct? Yeah?
Yeah, it's commercial zone. The minimum lot size is 7,500 square.
Yeah.
This is 72,000 square, so it's almost 10 times the minimum.
Yeah. All right, maybe I'm just seeing, it looks smaller compared to the much larger lot size, but yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's because this is a 40 scale plan, so our inch plus 40 feet. And also, this is five and a half acres, right here, to put in perspective.
All right, yeah, I think that's all we have.
That rectangle that is on there is 100 feet by 200. So it's two-thirds, about two-thirds of a professional football field. And you can see that you could even fit probably the whole football field on the property. It's bigger than just a scale.
And I'll say, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions or concerns or comments?
I'm sorry, I completely, I guess I completely unrelated one. I don't know, this is, I suppose partly one for Gary, like, would we need to do a new traffics, or have a traffic study done for this with the new DOT project?
No.
Okay.
I think would, that, where the traffic study would come in, would be when the application is.
Okay, you're right, you're right, you're absolutely right. Because, yeah, we're out of this one, I would just.
What do you apply for, what do you have that triggered?
Yeah, because we don't have it now, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, with the relocation of this driveway, it's going to help that intersection.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't come way up to the intersection.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you ever go to Starbucks at all, and you're leading Starbucks, you have the opposing traffic coming across that driveway, and you have King Arthur.
Yeah.
So this is going to push those driveways up the road way from Starbucks, which will definitely.
Thank you.
Other question? Because utilities, and I talked about water sewer, but electric overhead is not there. It's going to be outstanding for, to the structure.
Yeah, again, there's no proposed building or construction, but typical standard for new, for all the sites is under.
So the rest, utilities got to be under.
So I have one more question on the drain. The pink driveway that you would eventually remove, that storm drain, did you say you're going to retain that?
So for now, and then when a developer comes in, if it needs to be relocated.
Okay.
Then it will be relocated at that time, and that's when the easement would need to change.
But you just relocated around the building that was going on there?
Yes, yeah, it can easily go down, follow the north property line, and then the west property line.
Yeah.
If they need to.
Okay, yeah, that's.
And it may be there instead, we just don't know.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Which is, it kind of bisects the lot.
Yeah, that's my question.
Depending on its elevation, most development is probably going to affect at least a portion. We initially intended to get rid of the drainage system and go out, like I had mentioned earlier, go out.
Okay.
Where, to King Arthur, where the new driveway would be, but then town engineer prefers that we don't keep that, we keep it down through the lots.
His only comment was an email regarding easement, drainage, drainage at this time, so I guess it's all more to say, on a site plan, review.
He being the town engineer?
Yeah, Alex Loeb, yes.
Okay.
We also got staff, we have items for the record, A through N, of the application plans, staff review comments from the zoning official, town engineer, fire marshal. And we note that the legal notice was published in 10/30, and November 4th edition of the Monday, the newspaper. We've also received certified balance back on applicant, certificate of balance. I think it was September 7th, 24th, somewhere. Sorry, October 31st.
You know, there was a comment from Water and Sewer, no, Water and Sewer, the, oh yeah, right, what we go out in the allocation of the sewer capacity, you've expected that this starter were 5,000 gallons at some point.
That's a typical WPCA comment, is 5,000 gallons a day is their threshold.
Right.
On that they can approve as a rate. So again, there's no proposed construction, but say if they go to a big restaurant, and they have 7,000 gallons a day, that would have to go through the special process.
Right.
With WPCA for more allocation.
Right.
5,000 gallons a day is a lot, which probably wouldn't improve.
Right. 5,000 gallons of 20 dwelling units.
So they wouldn't, as of now, if they didn't exceed that, obviously they have to apply for that capacity as well.
Right, right.
So prior to making their application for logic recycling, or making their application for allocation, follow that.
Thank you. Does anybody else, maybe the commissioners have any other questions or comments?
We did post today, the 4x4 sign out there, I don't know if you've seen it, but we did provide photos today that we posted.
We have the, we have that in our materials too, in here.
Yeah.
I don't know if they're in this, but they're on the.
Maybe it was there, yes. Probably noticed it.
I saw that.
Do we have that color?
Yeah, it's in here. I got it.
Do you have any further comments or any?
I don't think we're all set.
I think we're good, any other, anybody else up in the audience wants to comment, or?
Yeah, this is public hearing.
Public hearing, right.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, you can decide whether to close, continue the public hearing at this point, in motion? You need a motion?
You need a motion to close it. I think the only thing outstanding is the driveway distance.
Right.
I think we just continue, let them address that one issue.
Right.
And certainly, whatever they submit, we can unify town council.
Right.
In a successful form. I think that should answer all the questions.
So, and then we, we don't have to make a decision by the, next meeting's December 10th, so I'll still be within the time period. They can make a decision.
Yeah, yeah, we have to conduct this hearing, so we'll have to close it at the next meeting for an extension. I don't really appreciate, but the one, the only outstanding item is easement. Short of do that, and I'm open myself, you know, finding compliance with regs, I'm not anticipating extension or anything with that, so we can only close and go on.
Okay. I think that's a good idea, talk, you talk to the attorney and, you know, get more clarification on the easement before the next meeting, so.
Or any other, any other further discussion, or any comments?
Guess I can take, I can take a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All wanting to approve a continuation of the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any extensions? Nope. Okay, so we have a motion, unanimous motion to continue the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next meeting is December 10th, so. Next item on the agenda is a zoning referral from, regarding a proposed tax amendment to amend sections 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12, the East Line zoning regulations to comply with state PA 23-142. Gary, you know?
So as I had mentioned, some of that legislation that got passed, so this is a result of some of that. So in order to remain compliant with Public Act 23-142, we basically are being mandated So in order to remain compliant with Public Act twenty-three, one forty-two, um, we basically are being mandated to adjust our regulations to comply. This is for, I believe, childcare homes or in-home childcare businesses.
Also group homes.
Pardon?
Group homes as well.
So we have to certify that our regs are in compliance with this and that we allow them. And, uh, so the zoning commission is making changes to the regs to do such things. There's a pretty extensive letter in your packet, um, from our town attorney. Kind of outlining the reasons why and how that the changes will bring us into compliance. So essentially, we just can't prohibit them.
Right. So basically, we're just determining whether it's consistent with the P O C D and.
That's correct.
Right.
So I, I don't certainly don't think it's inconsistent. It supports housing.
It supports. I guess they totally mentioned sec, sec, chapter eight of the P O C D regarding business, supporting business, you know.
Yeah, it also supports the economic business.
Economic development, right.
As well as the housing.
Right.
That's really not housing, it's child home care.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything specific in the P O C D regarding that. So I don't care, but as you mentioned, economic development and housing would be consistent with. Does anyone want to spend time reading the, uh?
Yeah, I mean, I looked at it before, but it's pretty much what you said. It's just that, I'm sorry, I don't wanna, that one, it's just. I guess I'm just surprised by that one. You could definitely spend a minute if you need to look, if you need to look at it, but it's.
I think they were saying they are, they're having a public hearing on it later in the month.
Zoning. Zoning. So we're looking for our, our response, our report back to them.
Right.
Obviously, no response, so we consider favorable.
Right.
We try to send correspondence out.
Yeah.
I would note that, uh, Attorney's Mark's letter points out chapter nine versus chapter eight.
So you're saying, you're saying that, that it should be chapter eight and not chapter nine?
The section on economic.
I'm checking the. Chapter nine is economic development. Yes, affordable housing would be chapter seven.
I certainly don't know how much it supports housing. It does support the use of existing housing for these services, so.
What chapter does end up being?
It's nine.
So the section on residential.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's.
I think it specifically addresses childcare facilities and.
It does, and it talks about affordable housing.
Right.
Yeah, but we go through it and.
I don't think I referenced the housing piece, because I don't think it really supported that.
I mean, honestly, I'm kind of surprised that we don't have this already considered. I mean, I understand it's group homes, but like especially that we don't even really address childcare. I mean, how many people are doing this already in town? And we just don't regulate that, yeah?
Yeah. It seems like a zoning issue to me.
Yeah, right, yeah. We're not gonna make the final determination, we're just, uh.
Correct.
We're just gonna.
I certainly think it's consistent with.
Yeah, there's. Anyone else wanna spend more time?
No.
P O C D or? I just wanted to make sure that we read this simple.
Memo?
All right, yeah. No, I mean, they said it seems very reasonable.
Any other comments?
We, we would need to vote on it, right?
Yeah. I think they're gonna make a motion that's consistent with the P O C D and.
Would we be, I would assume the impression that we're making a motion that we would recommend this.
Well, that is, it's consistent with the P O C D per chapter nine, economic development. Does anyone wish to make a motion or?
I'll make a motion that we, um, I guess as you said, that there is no issue, conflict within P O C D, and we recommend that this goes up to zoning.
It's just there with the P O C D. Any other, any other comments or anybody wish to second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Okay. Unanimous decision that it's consistent with the P O C D. Next up, municipal referrals, doesn't look like we have any. Old business regarding the subdivision regulation, section four on the application submission procedure. Gary, any updates?
So you have, uh, added to your packet, uh, two pieces of paper there, uh, documents. One was the previous letter from Attorney's Mark regarding, you know, proposed changes. And so in response to that, we have an updated section four. Documenting depending on what Attorney's Mark has backed up in terms of what constitutes a significant effect. Did my best to try to define that in the regulation. But that's a thing that the commission will actually have to determine. So section four dash fourteen three explains and hopefully answering Attorney's Mark's comments. Determination of significance, what the criteria would be. Indicates that applicants. He indicates that an applicant to a municipal land agency is entitled to a reasonable certainty regarding what the regulations require. So section four dash thirteen, or four dash fourteen dash three, is attempting to express that by. It does need some work. Spelling changing things for agencies to the commission. But this really comes right out of the EPA. So I think that's just, you can have that for your review if you want. If you're just getting it.
Just one comment on four fourteen two. Where you first sentence, kind of get into the same discussion about. You say planned activities proposed to be undertaken which could have a major impact. Well, what does that mean?
Then goes into the next part here about including and not limited to in the next page.
Yeah, but.
I mean, that's already what's in there.
And that's what he said. He said that, that was his comment, was that that section didn't have any.
Yeah.
Criteria. What, what, what is a significant impact?
Oh, yeah, right, you're right. I see it here now. Could have a major impact.
Well, that's, isn't that all of the, all this that we just add to it, right?
So that fourteen dash three section is hopefully defining the whole. So A through G there are just examples of activities of what that could include. And then fourteen dash three is how the commission would determine whether there's a significant impact based on information provided.
So Gary, we're, we're looking at another draft of this the next time then? Is that what we're thinking?
Probably one more iteration.
At least one more.
I'll need to clean this one up.
Yeah.
But I think this is more in line with what Mark was suggesting with the draft edition. And I have a third document there. This is an outline of what included in the environmental assessment, so you have an idea of all the information that essentially you need to collect. And if we wanted a checklist. So this would be more like a N S E's added to the reg. Again, as you review this, I will just note, uh, Attorney's Mark's last comment was given scope of section four dash two dash three. Much of the information in the P I A may however be continued in the required reports.
I guess we can review it before the next meeting and you'll have more final draft. And at some point, we have to make a determination whether it's intended to a public, to present it to a public hearing at this point.
Yeah. What's our timeline for this?
It's just in draft, so until we actually want to adopt something.
Right.
Just taking this thing around if we notice or notice a, an application.
No immediate rush.
So we have time for legal review. So I think if you make a little more iteration, I can get it over to Mark, see what his thoughts are on it. We can present that at the next meeting. If anyone has comments or thoughts, you can just contact me directly. Jack, Mark, I can maybe edit.
Sounds good. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Um, next up is new business and, uh, looks like we have a regular meeting scheduled, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting schedule thing. Anybody, people want to review that or look it over?
Did we already do the, the business? Subdivision regulation?
Yeah, we just did that.
Isn't that the application for the town attorney for the text amendment? I just don't know if I'm missing something.
No, we're, uh. So we're on the new business, the, uh. Scheduled.
Okay, that's what we just did.
That's where. This is the text amendment. It's a good catch. I wasn't even looking that far.
We can move that along, we can move the Monday the tenth. Eighteenth, I guess, if it's the fourth of August or thirteenth or.
Which one is that? The February one?
The November eleventh.
Is that election day?
No, it's Veterans Day.
Oh, right, right.
Well, this is a civil, but is that gonna be the, the day? I don't know, sometimes they mess it up with like one veteran. That shouldn't be an issue, but I just know sometimes people will be like, oh, we're gonna observe it on the tenth.
Is it, is it, will Monday be considered?
I know it is always the eleventh, but I occasionally place it and be like, oh, we're not gonna have school on the tenth or something either, so I can't imagine a reason that would mess us up. I'm just thinking of it in a teacher way, I guess.
Wouldn't Monday be considered a holiday though?
No.
So wait, oh, it's the same day?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Say we can move it to the tenth.
So we'll change it to the tenth?
Yep.
So if we set a motion, we should note that the November eleventh meeting is changed to the tenth, I guess. Want to make a motion?
We'll make a change and file it.
There was something.
Does anybody else see any conflicts? Okay, so I have to take a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five regular meeting schedule?
With, with the change?
With the amended change, right.
So moved.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Absentions? Nope.
Unanimously approved with the amendment.
Next up, we discussing the two thousand twenty-four deep open space land acquisition grant application. A request for a letter of support from Arthur Carlson, Eastline Land Trust Incorporated for the acquisition of almost six acres of Heritage Road. Assessor's map thirty-five oh, lot twenty-three one.
Art is here to.
Do you want to just come? Please speak.
Let me give you some, a map of the property properly.
Thank you.
I think still, you know, the first few steps are.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also have a copy for the chairman. This is, you know, that's the Eastline Land Trust. We have to fill this out.
Yeah, the application?
Yeah.
This is kind of, is this our copy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is a map of the, uh, outlined in blue is the property that Eastline now owns that's abiding the. That's abiding the property.
Halfway, hundred and seventy.
Abiding the Hathaway property. The Hathaway property has occupied number one on the P O C D for the last fifteen years, I believe. It occupies it because of the characteristics. Seen this as a characteristics of land use. That was instrumental in developing that thing, so we can gradually discuss the value of properties. And this one comes out for the last fifteen years or so, is number one on the top. In the recent acquisition of that property. Hathaway property should be. That didn't mention boundaries, it's on that, that the northern shore of, of the lake. But the case at six acres was by included in the sale. And we're talking about adding that six acres to complete what we call the Hathaway property, okay? Big deal about this whole property is that it's the vital part of the watershed that feeds well number five, okay? I'll talk about well number five in a moment. The big deal about, uh. You have to protect the watershed to get good water. It's about, it's about that complicated, okay? And this is upstream. The watershed up, we've protected about seventy-five percent of the watershed upstream of well number five. Yale has contributed, protects a lot, what de facto. The town, the land trust has a forty acre pound piece, a thirty five acre piece. And now we instrumental in getting this. About a hundred and fourteen point five acre piece. What we need is for you to see this, understand, and then advocate that the town, well, by this thing, and they're willing to submit our proposal to DEEP. Let me give you a couple of factors beyond that characteristics of this thing. Right now, because of the property that we bought, there's about six thousand one hundred acres of shoreline of Patagonia. Let me buy this piece. It adds another eleven hundred. So that's about a mile and a half of pristine waterfront. Okay, now that has two real attributes. First one is part of the watershed that feeds our well five. The second one is incredible passive recreation, okay? Incredible passive, and easy access to it off Scott Road and off of Heritage Road. This particular piece of property, if you enter it off of Heritage Road, and that's the yellow line, you see that? And that's already put in. That's not a road, they're saying. The trees have been cut down, okay? And then you see that's the property that we're talking about. That's, this one map I gave you is more of a heritage. But to give you some of the other characteristics. Number five of all the wells has about one half of the salt road salts in it, all the other wells. Okay, this is a big deal. Number two, trying to make the point why protecting this watershed is so vital to the town. We're upstream of I ninety five. Who cares about that? Well, hundreds of thousands of gallons go by in trucks every year. We had our oil spill there. That well is safe. Every other well is in danger. All right. I think when we talk about, this last point I want to make. The other properties that exist in this watershed that feed this well are large. There's the Gulf Guards, twenty five acres, the Girl Scout camp. And when I say we own, we own what? Seventy five acres. And by the way, one forty acre plot we have last week, water was still coming on to the beginning of the segment. That's the one that's connected to the three hundred acres that the town owns. So it's, it's got every virtue we need. We need good supporting waters. We've been quite successful. No reason why we won't be continuing to be successful because we frankly know what we're talking about. Happy to answer any questions.
It's a great thing you're doing. Happy to have you doing it, boy. Thank you so much.
If you want to take a walk around, it'll somewhat let me know, okay? We could park the cars, open heritage and walk down it and see it. The leaves are off. We'd get a, get a good feel for it. See, I don't want to underestimate even the recreational aspect. We don't have any waterfront. We can just sit there with a fishing rod and stuff. Think about that. We don't have access. Why we don't want houses there, that takes away part of the access to the town.
Right.
So about the town's G I S, this is the twenty sixteen aerial. You can kind of see the overall, kind of its location relative to the little parcels around the large parcels that Art is referring to. Kind of get the context where this is the town. Obviously, the black area here is.
Any values have any questions or comments?
Not really.
So if we did, if the, if the land trust was to be able to buy that, would that open this property up through that driveway? So that you could go there and maybe park? Or is this going to be like fully preserved and not able?
Fully preserved.
And so, so, so it wouldn't be open for someone to like drive up there to get it?
I think the state of Connecticut through their grant application, they're going to want public access. In the end, you've got public access, the hundred seventeen acres adjacent to it. I think that would probably just be the natural.
That's a caveat, but that's every grant we've ever got. We got, we own three hundred acres on, well, what's the name of the road?
Crossy Hill? Home Shore.
Town.
Between homes and Crossy Hill.
And that, that has to be, that's opposite the public. We couldn't even think about. And they wouldn't think about giving us money either. But that's the whole idea.
So in this particular area, I don't, in terms of parking, most likely you'd have to probably get a driveway down there. That's, I mean, that's a fifty foot wide swath. So you could provide, you know, some angle or parallel to that parking in there.
You could park right at the top, right off the heritage.
Yeah, there's, just again, there's only so much room within existing right of way. And that's what we have to work with it.
Well, we also have another access off of Scott Road.
Yes.
So.
There's a potential for some vehicular access here and or. I think you'd get a parking area.
So do we have particular language that you're looking for, like some keywords or whatever? You're asking for a letter of support. What?
I think one of them, I'd like to see it in there, not only for recreational purposes, but watershed protection. We've never had a, we've never had that. That was a big deal in this town protecting the water supply. We have to concentrate on that. We lucked out with Yale and this, I don't exactly know. We're adding to that.
My question would be, what is the max grant request? Are you requesting in terms of funds? What are you requesting in terms of funds?
Well, you can have a yellow local appraisal first.
And does DEEP have criteria that would date awards that?
What's that?
The criteria DEEP uses for awards, I know with the initial grant for the Hathaway piece, that's, you know, we're going to fund up to sixty percent or something.
Sixty five.
Sixty five. They've got modified thereafter.
Well, I think it's going back to that rule. For years, it was always sixty five percent. When we, two years ago, applied for our grant, we expected to get one million four hundred thousand dollars for the two point two million dollar value of Hathaway. Three weeks before it was awarded, they changed the rules. The maximum grant would be four hundred thousand dollars. And that's so everybody who made application would get some money. Well, you know what happens? You get, you divide it forty five times, you get some small bonus. You can't buy anything. Okay? We've done millions of dollars, a million dollars before. And that's, I think they're, I would go to that. The town will argue that the town should, it's important enough for the town to pay for it. By the way, I have, I have a couple of favorite questions. I always like to ask. Can you name me one piece of open space that's ever been purchased that the next generation regretted? Let's think of Cook's Point. You know, there was a fight in town over that. Okay, people in the northern towns, they didn't want it because they didn't want it, and they never went to the ocean. About sixty five, sixty eight, here, 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 zero. What is it worth now? Think about the white mountains. Think of any piece of open space, and I'm going to be happy to hear that you think it's, I'm going to, you could not tell me why it was a bad idea. That's what we're, that's what we're.
So you're looking for a letter of support from both planning commission and inland wetlands? You spoke, you spoke to inland wetlands last week? And they were.
And I'll speak to the conservation commissioner.
Okay.
I was chairman there for thirteen years, so.
Right, and they, inland wetlands didn't have any concerns or?
It's impossible to have it.
Right, right.
Should we protect our drinking water?
Right, right.
Yeah, wetlands was supportive.
Was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, the wetlands was supportive of the.
Yeah.
If they didn't support it, I would wonder what. Where they were when I was talking.
Right. So the letter of support is, one is coming from the inland wetlands and one would come from us? We draft and I just, I can go in and sign it or? Do we need to make a motion to, a letter of support? Okay.
Are there any further discussion or questions or comments?
Do you want to speak? Any, any other comments or?
No.
I'm good.
I guess I entertain a motion to.
Are we asking?
Support. A letter of support?
I guess I was just, are we asking the planning commission and Director Geishel to like draft a letter of support? Or are we asking?
I think Gary's going to draft a letter.
Yeah, and that's just what I should, I guess what I'm saying is the motion should, is the motion saying, oh yes, we, we want Director Geishel to, to, to draft a letter of support?
The motion is that you're going to draft a letter of support.
Okay.
All right, I can.
All right.
I can come in and sign it.
Yeah.
Like a few blocks away.
So I can entertain a motion for?
Yeah. I would like to make a motion to some person will be drafting a letter of support on behalf of the planning commission in support of acquisition of the, sorry, for this six acres frontage on Patagonia Lake.
Okay, good.
For use of open space.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All, any abstentions?
Unanimous approval.
Thank you.
All right.
I think that's it for agenda. Just like.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.